Good evening, everyone. Hope you're enjoying the sunny weather out there. I will now call our July 2nd Mayor and City Council Work Session to order at 6:00 P.M. Today, we have four items to consider and discuss. First, we have a bid recommendation, LA 25-010, Eighth Street Improvement Project being led by our Department of Public Works. And this evening, we have Acting Director Tommy Helms to help us out. You now have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sidnor, President Clark, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for awarding the contract for Eighth Street Improvement Project, LA 25-010. This project involves the removal and replacement of concrete sidewalks, ADA compliant ramps, and concrete curb and gutter. It also includes the installation of new thermoplastic roadway markings, arrays, crosswalk with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and construction of a new concrete sidewalk apron at the park where one doesn't currently exist. Additionally, asphalt resurfacing will be performed on Eighth Street from Montgomery Street to Montrose Avenue with an extra 100 feet of two-inch by two minutes asphalt resurfacing on the 1100 block of Eighth Street up to the guardrails dead end. The Department of Public Works has solicited public bids for this project resulting in the receipt of 11 submissions. A formal bid opening was conducted on June 6, 2025, at the Laurel Municipal Center. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. Calvert-Reddy Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC, $247,282.18. Stanley Concrete LLC, $252,000 even. Patent Construction Company LLC, $252,259. SFMS LLC, $281,439.38. E&amp;R Services Inc., $287,627.20. Alcoa Concrete and Masonry Inc., $321,620. Image Asphalt Maintenance Incorporated, $329,572.50. Espina Paving Inc., $361,925.51. Highway and Safety Services Inc., $387,08.57. Waus Contracting Inc., $390,643. Blue Ridge Inc., $555,863.25. Bitter Two is the low bidder due to their certified MBE status and within 3% of the lowest bid. Funding for this project is available through the Adopted FY26 Capital Improvement Program, Eighth Street Improvements. It is recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to Stanley Concrete LLC of Crofton, Maryland, a certified minority business enterprise for the bid of $252,000 with the contingency of an additional $25,200 for a total of $277,200. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I see Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And thank you also, Director or Acting Director Helms, for your plastic queries earlier this week. Just to clarify for residents, I think this is intended to be all of Eighth Street, so if anybody's living along that road, they should just know that somewhere along the lines, this is gonna, they'll see this new road on the street?
Correct. It's, it pretty much is the whole Eighth Street except for there is a segment starting 450 feet north of Gorman that will be overlaid up to Montrose Avenue. So the existing pavement before that is in good condition, so we're not going to touch on that part.
Gotcha, sounds good. And one other thing, I think, just to clarify for the sidewalk apron, I think that's referring to sort of those parking spots alongside McCullough Field where there isn't a sidewalk right now, and we'll have a sidewalk once this is in there going forward?
Correct. So we'll be putting in a sidewalk, so you guys aren't walking on the deteriorated pavement anymore.
Yeah, that, that sounds great. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Do we have additional questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none, with no further questions, this bid recommendation will be placed on our July 14th agenda for our virtual Mayor and City Council meeting at 6:00 P.M. Moving to Agenda Item Number Three, we have a bid recommendation, LA 25-001 for a lane improvement project on Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane. Acting Director Tommy Helms, you now have the floor again.
Thank you. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for awarding the contract for Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvement Project, LA 25-011. This project involves the removal and replacement of existing sidewalks and curb and gutter. It also includes two-inch deep milling, four feet wide from the edge of curb and gutter, followed by a two-inch by two minutes asphalt overlay for the entire length of Carriage Hill Drive and its lane. Additionally, the project will upgrade all ramps to new ADA compliance standards, install new thermoplastic roadway markings and crosswalks, and perform full-depth reconstruction of 12 inches deep of, 12 inches deep of the street at the bottom of the hill to ensure a long-lasting pavement. This project will improve the stormwater drainage. The Department of Public Works has solicited public bids for this project resulting in the receipt of 10 submissions. A formal bid opening was conducted on June 11, 2025, at the Laurel Municipal Center. The submitted bids ranked from lowest to highest are as follows. Stanley Concrete LLC, $144,000 even. VMP Construction Inc., $164,172. Calvert-Reddy Mix and Concrete Supplies LLC, $174,902. SFMS LLC, $191,072.90. Image Asphalt Maintenance Inc., $197,140. Highway and Safety Services Inc., $199,183. Alcoa Concrete and Masonry Inc., $216,570.50. E&amp;R Services Inc., $218,556.31. Espina Paving Inc., $231,962.30. Patent Construction Company LLC, $253,699. The low bid is a certified MBE firm. Funding for this project is available through the Adopted FY26 Capital Improvement Program, Carriage Hill Drive and Carriage Hill Lane Improvements. It's recommended that the contract for this project be awarded to Stanley Concrete LLC of Crofton, Maryland, a certified minority business enterprise for their bid of $144,000 with the contingency of an additional $14,400 for a total of $158,400. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. I will now open the floor for questions or comments from the council. I don't see any, so, great job. So with no further questions or comments from the council, this bid recommendation will be placed on our July 14th agenda for our virtual Mayor and City Council meeting at 6:00 P.M. Thank you, Mr. Helms, we appreciate your time. Next on our agenda, we have Agenda Item, excuse me, Number Four, which is a proposed Resolution Number 7-2025, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland expressing support for Woodland Job Corps Center and urging continued federal funding of the Job Corps program. I'm proud, along with my colleagues and the mayor, to introduce this resolution that is both timely and critically important, one that supports the Woodland Job Corps Center located at 3300 Laurel Fort Mead Road and urges continued federal investment in the National Job Corps program. On June 17th, each of us received a request regarding this resolution from Daniel Wright, who serves as a field coordinator for the UBC National Corps Job Corps Training Fund. Mr. Wright has been working closely with communities across the country to build support for Job Corps and ensures that the program continues to have the resources it needs to thrive. Madam Clerk, is Mr. Daniel Wright on the line?
Yes, I'll permit him to listen now, allow him to talk.
Thank you. So now to share more about the national effort and the importance of this resolution, I'd like to welcome Daniel Wright to the floor. Mr. Wright, you now have the floor to explain more to us about this timely resolution and your Job Corps program.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Hello, everyone, thank you. Yes, I'm Daniel Wright. Thank you all for the time. I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank the President and all the City Council members and the mayor to give me a few minutes to speak on this important issue. And as Ms. Clark mentioned, I have been reaching out to, I'm a field coordinator for the program, so I work for the UBC, it's United Brotherhood of Carpenters, and the Job Corps program. So myself, I've been affiliated with the program for 16 years now, 10 years as an instructor in New Jersey and seven years as a field coordinator. So, you know, I've been with the program for a long time, I know the value that it has. I'd like to tell you a little bit about why the program is so important and the grassroots support that we're looking for. And I don't, I don't know how familiar you all are with the program, but I'd like to offer, you know, there's times from time, there's, there's events on center, there's Industry Council and Community Relations luncheons, and I'm going to share that with the council president, if that's okay, and that usually happens quarterly, if you'd like to come out and I'd meet with you all or anybody who's interested, but the backstory of what's going on is the, we have been funded through Congress for what's called PY25, so that goes all the way to June of '26, so that's roughly a year, we've already been allocated the funds for. So the current administration went ahead and basically canceled our contracts without warning. There's, it's in litigation now, and a federal judge in New York City has granted a, I guess you'd call a TRO, Temporary Restraining Order. So we're back in business, our instructor, we can't, we pulled off-center for a few days, the students were off-center and, and some of them are homeless, you know, so it was a terrible situation. I don't know how, how much you guys have been following it at all. If you're on social media, please go ahead and put in Job Corps stories, and you're going to see some of the success, success stories from the students. And it's, it's hard to ignore, so there's a lot of support that we're having. Initially, we reached out to, you know, congressmen and senators and because they're the ones going to have the final call on our funding. But now I've been reaching out to the City Council members and for support, I have got a lot of success so far. Again, I'd like to thank everybody on the call here. And I don't know how much time I have here, but I'll tell you briefly about the program. It's for 16 to 24-year-olds. A lot of the kids that come in are, some of them are homeless, you know, some of them come from the foster system. The program runs for two years, so if the students need a high school diploma, there's a high school diploma program. If they need a driver's license, there's a driver's ed program. There is the vocational program, which I oversee, the carpenters, so there's multiple vocational programs on center. I have statistics, I'm not going to bore you with a lot, but there, there are, the OBS is that, that's how many students we can have on center, so right there in your area in in Laurel, there's planned for 188 males on center, and we have 167. There's planned for 112 females, and we have 69. And our utilization rate, our utilization rate right now is at 79%, so we're not quite full. And that's due to some of the problems we've been having right now with our funding and things of that nature. Other than that, I mean, I do have all the statistics in front of me. I would like to share with you all, I mean, it's a great opportunity for the young people. Our main goal is to get them into registered apprenticeship programs. Again, they could be on campus for two years, and a large population of these students are homeless, so we, we actually put them in work-based learning programs, so they can save money for when they complete, we give them a stipend when they leave. We follow them for a year after they complete and help the students get placed. We also advocate for college, military, advanced training programs that Job Corps offers for our students. Also, the students that live in your area there in Laurel, if they can't get into Woodland or there's a program that they want to have that Woodland doesn't offer, there's other programs in the area, Potomac at DC, there's West Virginia, Virginia, and we send the students around there. And I can go on and on, but I don't want to take up too much more of your time. I just wanted to thank everybody for actually considering to adopt the resolution to support the Job Corps center there locally. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm available to answer, hopefully. If I can't answer them, I told Ms. Clark that I would do my best to get the correct answer back to you. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wright. I saw Mayor Sidnor, you can feel free to proceed, and then I see Councilmember Mills as well.
Good evening, Mr. Wright. Thank you for your time today. The City of Laurel is very familiar with Job Corps, we've been working with Job Corps Woodland for ever since I've been on the council, you know, we actually, one day after tours, and I was a council member, we invited the Woodland Job Corps Culinary Department to cook a breakfast for us, we had an event. So it's 100% for the City of Laurel, we received the letter, it wasn't no hesitation for us to support that. I've been following the story with Woodland Job Corps, myself, retired probationist, I'm familiar with education program with Woodland Job Corps, all Job Corps provide throughout the United States, so, you know, we ready to support 100%. So we got a letter we're going to send to our United States Senators and our congressmen as well, so you got the City of Laurel totally support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, that means very much. I really appreciate that, and I suspected that you all did know about the, the local program there and were familiar. And I'm, I'm going to work hard myself to, to stay in communication with everyone here and let you know when there's events and different things happening, and I really appreciate it, thank you.
No problem, sir, thank you for your time as well.
Thank you. I also saw Councilmember Mills, feel free to proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Wright, I am very familiar with the Job Corps at Woodland. I actually own a business, CDL School on Main Street, and so I've been affiliated with, with you all for quite a while. And so my, my support for the Job Corps is, is one that I, that you have, that you have as far as our support. Now, I have, I do have an idea, though, that I like to just kind of pose, that we have the Craig A. Mo Multi-Service Center right by the Home Depot off of Port Mead. And that, that facility houses 19 male and 19 female, and the director there is Director LeBlanc. And I think that you should get in contact with her to see if, if, if that can be like a next step for the, for the men and women there, and that's going through the program there. Because there's a program at, at the multi-service center that, that people go through, and these, these rooms, they hold 19 men and 19, and 19 women. It's like a college dorm, you, if you came through and just kind of did a tour and just kind of, you know, brainstorm and see what, see what comes to mind as far as, you know, how we can help further their, their education, their success, and their success with the program and their success in life. So that's just one of my suggestions there.
Hey, thank you, girls. I do appreciate that, and you're absolutely right, you know, our students can stay for up to two years. The average length of stay is one year. However, if you complete a student at 19 years old, some of these kids were still homeless and they haven't saved enough money and they need some more support services, so something like that is perfect, and I am going to look into that. And just as I mentioned, I'm going to communicate with you all when we have events. Please feel free to reach out to me anytime if you have a situation like that where we can partner, I do appreciate it.
Yeah, sure, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? All right, well, while I'm looking at that, just to let you know, I thank you again, Mr. Wright, for reaching out to us, as the, as Mayor Sidnor said. We didn't hesitate at all. I think he and I both responded almost around the same time because we were so excited about seeing it. So thank you for going around two different councils because a lot of things are happening now, but this is a very important initiative and program. You know, I really believe that by us coming together, especially as a council, that we have the power with our collective voices to try to send that message of solidarity and, you know, just advocating for the continued federal funding for this program, that it does change lives every day, you know, looking it, looking it up just to make sure that it was the same program that my cousin actually participated in in a different state, you know, Job Care, Job Corps provides thousands of opportunities for young people, and young people really need that, those opportunities right now. It's a program, you know, that we know is, might face real economic challenges and, you know, some of our students and kids face those social obstacles as well. And I know that Job Corps helps to overcome those with the education and the training and support so that they can have a better future. So, you know, my cousin, like I said, she, her name is Yasmin, she actually is a proud graduate of the Job Corps program, not particularly in Laurel, but they all have that foundational support. Last week, she actually welcomed her first child into the world, and she's entering this new chapter of her life where she's getting a job and she's, has stability and she's now a CNA. I remember supporting her and her roommate financially, and her roommate was homeless, as you said. So not having that foundation to go back to, I can only imagine what some of the young people right now and the fear that they have, because I know that she now is helping some of those people that are affected in her Job Corps program. So I have seen firsthand that this program is, can be successful, especially for our young people, and that we need ways to invest into our young people so that it's constructive and empowering and it proves to engage and uplift our next generation, so thank you, thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, thank you so much.
No, you're welcome. I see Councilmember Mills, raise your hand again, please feel free to proceed.
Yes, and I, one other thing, Mr. Wright, so we just, we're just coming back from Ocean City, the Merlin Municipal League, and the Governor Wes Moore, he spoke very highly of people, of, of his support of trades for, you know, individuals instead of just one option of college. So, you know, it would behoove you to definitely to reach out, to, you know, send a letter to the Lieutenant Governor and to the Governor and, and see what they can do as well.
I will do that, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills, and thank you again, Mr. Wright, for joining us today and for your dedication and support of this program. We support you and we appreciate you including us and reminding us of its importance.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Have a great night.
You as well, thank you. With no further questions or comments, and I see, you're welcome. With no further comments or questions from the council, this, this proposed resolution will be placed on our July 14th agenda for first public hearing during our virtual Mayor and City Council meeting at 6:00 P.M. All right, last but not least, we have Agenda Item Number Five, a proposed ordinance amendment sponsored by Councilmember James Cole and Councilmember Adrian Simmons, Ordinance Number 2037, which is an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter Seven, Garbage, Waste, Weed, Recycling, etc. Section 7-36, Public Education and Enforcement. Section 7-38, Penalties and Adding, Section 7-37.1, Notice of Violation and Providing an Effective Date. Councilmembers James Cole and Adrian Simmons, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. As a reminder for everybody, mandatory composting went into effect yesterday for the city, but penalties do not start until December of 2025. If you'll remember, in the summer of 2024, there was a capital improvement project that was brought before council to bring in big-belly compost containers to multifamily dwellings, so the condominium units, and that was not approved by the council. We were left with a situation where there is now a mandatory composting for them, but there's no mechanism for them to compost, so what this ordinance does is a few things. The first thing is it changes the effective date for the condominiums until we can find a solution to provide them with composting facilities. So it changes the effective date for enforcement for condominiums only to December of 2026. A couple other items that are in this ordinance, cleaning up language about enforcement. Who will be doing that? It'll be the Sustainability Manager in coordination with Public Works. And then there are a couple other items that were added. Mr. Simmons, if you'd like to speak on Section 7-37?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Cole, and yeah, in the process of updating the ordinance, one of the things I was interested to revisit is the particular mechanisms around the enforcement approach as originally described. So my goal was that with the city moving to this program that the enforcement provisions should be no more expansive than the protocols we already follow in normal code enforcement, namely always beginning with a notice. And for me, that really, that step of if there's something that's out of line with the code, a notice is provided to a resident and allows for building awareness, allows for conversation, a sort of a much more human and personal first step in the process. And originally, the ordinance allowed to jump straight to a penalty without any requirement for notice, so that was a change you'll see in what's before us today. The other key piece was that, especially in light of some of the trash truck equipment that we approved last fall, essentially all the inspections for the program can occur curbside during the trash collection, and there's no need to enter a resident's yard or deck or fence line or anything like that. And for me, that comes from a reasonable expectation residents can have for peaceful enjoyment of their property, and only to compromise that for more serious circumstances like life safety and the composting doesn't quite raise to that level, so folks will see some adjustments around that as well. And as Councilmember Cole alluded to, there was some greater clarity around which city team members would be part of, of that process. So thank you, everyone, for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Simmons. I also wanted to include that we are in talks while we were working on this ordinance with our Sustainability Manager, Ms. Blair. There are pilot programs happening to make sure that we have a solution for the condominium units before we get to this deadline. I see that Ms. Blair is on tonight. Ms. Blair, is there anything that Mr. Simmons and I forgot to add?
Yes, sir. The, I do want to point out that what the council had approved, which was the compliance piece, the RFID readers and the, the pictures allow us, allow me to reach out to the residents on a much more individual, personalized, with a personalized message so that we can really address what the situation is as opposed to just sending, you know, a kind of a form letter. And it also helps me to update the education, so if we see an issue kind of reoccurring, it gives us a better idea and the better means to say, okay, this is what we need to focus our education on. So as far as the condos, yeah, I'm still looking for grants, and we have a couple in the works, and we do have And we do have um two big bellies. Uh one of them will be piloted um over at the condos. So that we can get feedback from the residents and see where we can go next.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Is there anything in addition, um Councilmember Simmons and Councilmember Cole that you wanted to say before we move on to questions or comments? Nope. All right. I see Mayor Sidnor, um his hand is up to speak and then after that, I see Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Please feel free.
I just wanna thank uh Councilmember Simmons and Councilman Coles and Ms. Blair for working on this project. You know, I'm still hesitant about the condominiums. I know we got a pilot program going into effect. But I'm looking forward to the research decided that's gonna go because, as you know, condominiums are. A collective of stuff from multiple residents, not individuals. So uh looking forward to that process. So that's very interesting. I just wanted to put that on record. Every now and then the townhomes and single-family homes, we can track that compost individually per resident. The condominium is gonna be the challenger thing for us. So I'm just looking forward to the research and see how we can do that, you know, get them in compliance. Once again, that's not. That's collectively, people going into a a bin dropping trash off compost collectively. So. Just looking forward to how we're gonna enforce that and how we're gonna educate the folks and how we're gonna collect the data on that as well. So that's why I just put that on the record. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, Councilmember Mills, and then I see Councilwoman Christine Johnson.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Um as the compost ambassador. I'd like to thank Adrian Simmons, Council Adrian Simmons, Councilman Adrian uh James Cole. Great work and I um I have um I have no complaints about it. Um but as the mayor is speaking, as far as the condominiums, I did have thoughts on that. And my thought is that um uh maybe maybe Ms. Blair, you could uh perhaps get in contact. You know, like some of the, some of the um, well, actually all trash bins. At condominiums, just it just, I'm gonna say condominiums and town, I'm sorry, condominiums and apartment units. Um you have, you have condominiums that are apartments and you have condominiums that are townhomes. So I'm being specific with condominiums that are apartments, those big units. That would be able to collect a lot of compost. Now. You can, you can get in contact with the um with the owners of the the trash bins. Um I'm not exactly sure if these these condominiums have recycled bins also. As far as like the big trash dumpster bins. But you can um like reach out, like I have a good friend, uh Kurt Good, who's the owner of. Him and his brother is owner of uh Good uh Trash and Recycling and also they own W W B. Um so on those bins, or you could just go directly to the owners of the apartments or. Management of the apartments, condominiums and ask them what what services, service providers. That do they have, then get in con- get it, receive that information, get in contact with the owners. And find out if they would be interested in having like. Like we use in the city of Laurel, we use the tan bins. Maybe they might have and may consider a um like a tan bin that have, you know. Their logo on it and have a big compost sign logo on the on those bins. Now, um in PG County, their their compost bins are green. So, you know, I mean, that that's another issue outside of the city, but just specifically. Thinking and speaking of for the city, you know, just finding out uh strategically, finding out who are the owners. Um we can get, like I said, we get that information from the uh condominium condominium management. And then get in contact with the owners and see if they will be willing to do that. And and then maybe we could give them an incentive as far as or even some funding that we were gonna use for the big bellies. And maybe we can add to that just to kind of kind of get the ball rolling. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. I see Councilwoman Johnson. Feel free to proceed.
Thank you, President Clark. I just wanted to also thank um Councilmembers Simmons and Cole for this, especially for catching the date. You know, sometimes we get stuck on stuff and stuff gets hemmed up. So good catch that we don't um we hemmed up on the date. But I did speak um with Councilman Simmons and I was sending you an email, Councilman Cole didn't quite get through, but. My um guess question or concern was more about the um consistency in the language. So it seems like we are just focusing on the condominiums. So I think you say, I mean, our apartments done. Um they're compost and trash like commercial. So is that separate that way? I guess that's my question. And then like Councilman Mills brought up, because, you know, I live in a condo association that is like a townhouse. So we do have individual bins. So I guess the difference is in the condos that are like apartments. So just looking for some clarification on verbiage within the um. Ordinance and then um clarification so that residents are aware because we do have those different dwellings. We're just trying to focus on that a little bit.
Uh so the the verbiage, we cleaned it up a little bit to try to separate out between. Single-family townhouse and the condominium. The condominium are really those. Uh apartment-style condos where there there's common area where everybody brings their trash. They don't have one at their unit. Ms. Blair, you have a list of, I believe we have six communities that this would affect?
Yes, and uh so how we define the condos in this case um is. They have trash corrals. So each resident goes to a specific corral. And that's where they have their trash container, their recycling container. And then the pilot will have a big belly, which is a steel container that is locked so that they um to to cut down on contamination. And um there would be all the education and the onboarding with them. But these residents are used to going to this corral. Um to get, you know, to dispose of their trash and recycling. So now they would have. A way to uh participate in the composting. The uh apartments are not, uh even with recycling, how the legislation is written. Um consistent with with the county is that the apartment owner, the the property management, the owners of the property. Must provide to the residents of the apartments the ability to recycle. Um the opportunity to to recycle and so and that comes with, they have to have certain criteria that they have to meet. That that they um also help, that the city assist with because we we do provide collection as as they ask. Uh now with, so that would be, that is legislation that is for the organics recycling has not been. Um has not even been created. What we're focusing on are the property owners. Or the condos that have common area trash corrals. And then they that that is where they would be able to um uh do organic recycling. And yes, there's there's six condo communities within the city that fit fit the criteria. Um and would be a good match uh for something like uh the Big Belly.
So that may be something to put in writing too, just so that it makes sense. So we know which we're talking about because like I said, there are different communities. So when I read condo, I read me, but it doesn't actually involve me, so.
Ms. Johnson suggesting that we list out the specific communities that this affects in the legislation?
Not specific communities, but like you said, that community trash collection.
Maybe it's like condominiums with shared trash corrals, something to that effect because. Because you you're absolutely right. Condominiums is really just a legal term for the form of ownership, but some of them have shared trash corrals and some don't. So maybe. Condominiums with shared trash corrals could be an easy way to reference that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Um I also had a question. Um first, thank you to my colleagues for. Making these updates. I know that this was something that um we were very excited about. And have been working on for quite some time. So thank you, Ms. Blair, as well. Um because I know this has not been easy. Um however, I do have a question. Um my first question, uh Councilwoman Johnson actually brought up. Regarding the consistency in language, I was wondering that as well. I saw a couple of places where sometimes in the parentheses it says um including. Uh condominiums and in some places it doesn't. Um in addition to that, I also wanted to understand clarification on uh section seven dash thirty-eight, the penalties. And I noticed that it said, any person who violates any section of this chapter after issuance of three notices of violation. Um shall be guilty of the municipal infraction. So for clarity, they get three opportunities. Without being um fined and then after that. There's a fine of the fifty dollars for the first offense, then the second time it's one hundred, and then the third time after the three, it's one fifty?
That's correct. And and I know the the mayor helped draft this part of this section too, but the gist is that notice one, there's no penalties assessed upfront. This is to create time for a conversation, for education, for help, create some awareness. Um and then at that point, only after that third one would would a penalty be considered?
Okay, thank you. And just to understand, how much does it cost us as a city? Because I, from my understanding, with composting, once you mess it up, the entire bin is messed up. So how much does it cost us as a city to allow each person to have those three chances?
And I know I I might like let Ms. Blair uh speak to that. It was one of the broader points and why there's this there a little bit is because. If there is greater, a certain degree of contamination to the composting, we either. Get charged an extra fee when the city drops it off at the organics recycling site. Uh and or we could be turned away entirely and have to truck it to a non-composting and pay the higher fees. And part of this goal, in addition to the environmental awareness, is it lowers the dump fees for the city from somewhere north of eighty dollars. Per ton or whatever the unit of matter is to somewhere close to thirty. But uh I might let um Ms. Blair address that more specifically. Uh but thank you.
Yes, Ms. Blair, and then I see Mayor Sidnor as well.
Okay, so um so how it how it is uh again with the compliance is that um the the crews are instructed. Uh to get to the uh to the address, they can, the R F I D will identify. Uh the exact address. Um a picture will be taken if there's contamination. At that point, it is sent to the back of the house, which is which is me. Um and we assess like what the problem is. So then now the picture of this is what the problem is, this is how we can fix it. This is where I would have that one-on-one conversation or go out to to the address to kind of help them work through it. So that's the first one. That's that's the first letter. You did something here, here, let us help you correct it. The second one, as we escalate, they still haven't corrected it. It's like, okay, this is, you still haven't corrected it. And we've tagged it and we've left it. You still haven't corrected it. And this is the, this is how the legislation reads where you can get, it's a municipal infraction. If you don't correct it. Again, we're not issuing anything, but we're letting them know that there is an escalation. The third time, and again, each time it's tagged by the crews. Um so that now if it's contaminated or there's something wrong with it, the compost crew will not pick it up. But we can notify the trash crew to pick it up. It's not ideal. But again, as Councilman Simmons was was talking about, the fines. At our composting facility for bringing in contaminated loads is quite high. So we have to, for that, like for that one container, it would, it would go into a trash truck. If it's not contaminated, we can't correct it. The third time, now, so it's now been tagged, the third time we go back. Now it's, you you, here's your citation. You're going to get the next, the next, the next avenue we have is a citation. But each time, since I don't have someone's phone number, we are now relying on delivering information to them. Um to to get them on board and to be able to correct any issues.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I just didn't know if it would cost us anything. Um or and or how we will cover that, you know, as a council in the city.
Right, so it, so does it cost us anything for the compliance or does it cost us anything to get fined by um M E S?
Both.
Okay, so when we have to divert it into the trash truck, you're now paying that higher, you're paying that higher tipping fee. So we determined that it's sixty dollars difference between tip, you know, between what we're what we're paying at a landfill, what we're paying. For the organics to be processed at the facility. So there is that cost difference. The second cost difference is as it escalates, if if, when it gets tipped at the compost facility. If they can easily see it and it gets pulled out because the compost facility constantly tests. The organics for uh for certification for organic compost. So it's constantly tested. Uh if they see and they can, they can see like a plastic bag. As opposed to a compostable bag and they can easily take it out, I'm gonna get notified with a not-so-nice kind of email saying. This, if they dump it and it is all contaminative, they find contaminants, they will make us. Load it back on the truck and take it away and none of it can then be dumped. So now that whole, all that tonnage now has to go to the landfill. If it continues, they will not allow us to come there anymore. And then the city, we have nowhere else to go. So we want to make sure that we do not ever get to that point. Does that, does that answer the questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Mayor Sidnor, I think you also wanted to say something as well?
Nah, Ms. Blair covered it all. It's gonna be a learning curve. So I mean, we know that everything costs, hopefully that it doesn't cost us too much money, but we understand that. That's why the whole year, we've been going for the last two years, educating folks on composting. And it was optional, you know, so now it's mandatory and we can continue to educate folks. So we don't anticipate. A lot of fines, you know, our job is to educate folks first. And I think once we continue as council members and mayors. And um city officials continue to educate the folks in the community about composting. And in low elementary school and all the elementary schools are now, a lot of our composting, they're composting in school cafeterias as well. So. It's gonna be a a win at the end of the day.
Oh, go right ahead, Ms. Blair.
Okay, so I just wanted to, you know, and we talk about the success and and the mayor had just mentioned about the education and we have and we have our. We have our composting ambassadors. We have the sustainable Laurel, uh Mr. Cole and Mr. Mills and Council. Councilwoman Clark have 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 been great supporters of it in their own homes along with Councilman Simmons. I wanted, so as we've been pushing this out, just to give you an idea, from. Twenty twenty-four, where it was still voluntary, we were getting stuff out. From January to May, we composted forty-one tons of of organics. This year, where we're actively pushing it out, we're actively saying, okay, here's your cart. So far from January to May of twenty twenty-five, we're up to um seventy-three tons. So it's working. People are engaging in it. They're doing it. I know that there's a lot of like, eh. But they're getting on board and and I'm adjusting my education and outreach as I get. Feedback from the residents. So we've gotten, we're we're, we've gotten some composting hacks. We've gotten some fun things that that we've learned.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yes, um I just had one or two questions, I believe. Uh the next question, and thank you, Mayor Sidnor, for that additional information as well. Um I I assume that it will be the largest education. Piece of this would be for the residents as well as D P W, since they will be handling this mostly. Is that correct?
Everybody, everybody be educating them.
Everybody, yeah, so D P W crews, the the they they're the ones that. And they're out in the field, they will see something, they will hit a button, a picture is taken, they'll tag it. Um the staff is notified and then we do the outreach and the education. So I'm constantly updating the education and outreach. Public Works is the operational side. They're the ones that are going to tag it, leave it, but that's based on what um how we're educating our crews. So it it comes with educating the crews for the compost, but there's a whole bunch of other things. It's it's the trash overflow and the recycling contamination. So they're gonna start working on that. It's, it's the trash overflow and the recycling contamination. So they're gonna start working on that because that's already on the books, that has been for decades. So they get a feel for it, and then we're go, going to work into compost. Once I can get a conversation going with a resident, I can work in compost into any conversation. I can, I can work, I can get around to that. So I, but it's, it's getting, it's getting that one-on-one with people. And that, that's where the, the, um, the Ray or Division Verification Software, that's where that really plays a big part.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering that. And my last question, I just wanted a clarification. Did you mention that phase, pretty much phase one would be for the property owners with the trash corrals? But then phase two would be to include the apartments, um, with their recycling efforts and allowing them to be able to participate?
So this only addresses the condominiums. Right now, we do not do anything with the apartments.
Okay. Are we considering doing that in the future?
That's something long-term we can look into, but right now it is not on the books. Right now, all apartment buildings and businesses provide their own waste removal.
Okay. All right. I, I just asked that because living in an apartment, I feel like we have more people in the apartments that contribute to the trash within our city. And I'm just wondering how that's being managed. I know it's very difficult. Um, but we contribute so much in the apartment complexes that I'm wondering how we can try to curtail that and loop everybody in on that too. All right. No, those are my questions. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see any. Thank you, Councilmember Simmons and Councilmember Cole for your efforts on this and for taking the time to explain everything to us. Uh, with no further questions or comments, this proposed ordinance amendment will be placed on our July fourteenth agenda for our first public hearing during our virtual mayor and city council meeting at six P M. And thank you as well, Ms. Blair, for your time. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Remember Laurel's Independence Day celebration will take place on Saturday, July fifth, with the parade beginning this year at Marshall Avenue on Fourth Street. There will be family fun games that will begin at four P M throughout the afternoon. And fireworks will begin promptly at nine fifteen P M with vendors included. Also, for our next mayor and city council meeting on July fourteenth, we will have a special work session at five thirty P M and a regular mayor and city council meeting. You are more than welcome to join us and share your concerns and community observations with us at six P M virtually. Because here at Laurel, in Laurel, everyone is welcome. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great night.